You're on. Okay, good. Thank you. I'm gonna call the roll and I've noticed as I've been doing the minutes. I don't always get a good sense. I don't see people responding unless they speak and activate their microphone. So when we do, when I call a roll and then when we vote on anything later on, I'm gonna call it for your name and I'd like you to say A or N. So we can have that image up for the record. So let's see, Art Tanner. Here. Okay, Dana Ovia.
Yeah.
Blake Powell.
Yep.
Beth Steele.
Here.
Okay, and I'm Rick Smith. So that's the five voting members tonight. Larry Dunn is an alternate commission member and he's also managing our technical expertise. And for the record, just to introduce Mary Beth Solano, who is our new commission clerk.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now, I have to read this statement. You probably all have it memorized, but gotta do it. This meeting of the knowing zoning commission will take place through Zoom meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith. I'm chairman of the commission. Host of the Zoom meeting is Larry Dunn, alternate zoning commission member. Participants in this meeting will be the commission members, elected alternates, staff, and the commission's counsel if he joins us. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time they speak. Participants who'd like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate by using the raise hand icon or by raising your hand or speaking up in front of your screen. Just have the opportunity to speak after being called on by the chairman. Please mute your microphones until called on. Don't necessarily have to do that unless we're getting a lot of back noise. Normally our groups are so small, it hasn't been a problem. To offer a motion or second emotion, speak up or physically raise your hand. To vote on a motion, I will call on you to say it, I or N. Members of the public who have logged on will be observing the meeting, but there will be no public comment tonight. All participants must identify themselves before speaking. Each time they speak, members of the public can submit comments by writing to the commissioner after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed, and that is to our email address nfdzoning.com. And finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. And I will note for the record Lynn Marshall has joined us. Lynn, wave your hand. She's the other alternate, elected alternate member, and she does, as Larry does, participate in the debates and the discussions on short-term rentals. So that's that. The agenda items for tonight are essentially two. We have a series of meeting minutes to approve for two special meetings and two regular meetings. And then a further discussion on the development of management measures to address short-term rental and potentially a vote to transmit this to for council's review. So those are issues. Let's take the minutes first, distributed four sets. Take them in chronological order, November 17th, 2020, it was a regular meeting. Anybody have comments on those corrections, edits? Okay, seeing none. Meeting of November 24th, that was a special meeting on Mystic River Homes. Comments, corrections, edits. I see none. Special meeting on December 1st on short-term rentals. Comments, corrections, edits. I see none. And December 15th, which was a regular meeting and the start of the public hearing on Escarpoint Beach Sand Renewalishment. Edits, comments, corrections. I see none. So without objection, we'll call all four sets approved. Is there any objection? Seeing none, all four sets are approved. Next item of business is to pick up where we left off a month ago on the short-term rental issue. The concepts document, which has been on the OneDrive. We're about it. No, it's been on for every meeting. We've been talking for the last month, but it's been out there since about five days ago. For anybody watching who isn't aware, and when we put the document up, we have some decisions to make still, and we have some language that we had we had approved the concept in the past, but we need the commission to sign off on the language to make sure they're comfortable with how it reads. The decision points are bold-faced in yellow and the the items for agreement on language would be in light green. So having said that, Larry, can you put that one up on the screen, please? Okay, there we are with that. And I can still see everyone. Good. Okay. I will scroll up to the first item that needs discussion unless somebody stops me with a question or comment right there. We'll leave those two definitions for a while. Not necessary to talk to them about them right now unless we take an action that suggests that we treat both types differently. This last one on page three. There are two options. That was events and large parties. The initial original language was the first paragraph in 11. 11A is how I drafted it based on what you said you wanted in December. So is there a motion on one or the other of these, or would you like to do it a different way? Did I see you wave your hand, Beth? No?
No.
Okay, still reading. Okay. Yep.
Nip Tanner. Rick, you drafted the language. Could you summarize what the difference is between 11A and 10A?
Yes, thanks. The first paragraph under 11 is, we had that commercial scale gathering, which people weren't quite sure what that meant, which was a good point. And then we had the twice the number of authorized persons and the discussion was, well, what if you have a rental party of two, you can only have another two over, but you might want to have six of your family members. The backend of both of these paragraphs are similar where we talked about not limited to catered food, drink, disc jockey, microphone, amplified music. The difference between the two paragraphs is instead of the commercial scale gathering and the doubling of the rental party, I simply put in gatherings of more than 16 persons, including the rental party. Because that is what Airbnb or HomeAway or whichever the corporate name is, that's what they use as a definition of a large party.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Beth?
I'm making a motion. We adopt option 11A.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second? Dana Ovia. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, wave your hand in front of the screen, please, or say, no, say I, and let me get you individually, Nip.
Aye.
Okay, Dana?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Beth?
Hi.
And I'm a I, so that's a 5-0 unanimous. Thank you. Next item. We added a little bit of language here. Any person, it used to say operating, and if you recall the discussion a month ago, I think Blake brought the point up that we should include even advertising for a short-term rental without a permit. So you'll see that language two or three times in here where it arises. That was consistent with what you had wanted from December 1st. So if you want to change to it now, let's discuss changing it. Okay, seeing none, let's go further. Okay, this waiting period language, that is that's the three-year waiting period. And if you recall, the issue there was first, a few months ago, we talked about family transfers and then we talked about arms-length transfers and we finally settled on the clearest way of describing what we meant was if a transfer occurs for no financial consideration, then it would be exempt from the three-year waiting period. And again, the waiting period is intended to deal with people who only buy houses for the purpose of doing a short-term rental, commercial business in a residential zone, and that's one of the things in our goals we had decided we did not want to support. So see if you like that language. Dana?
I just want to revisit this once more and what the purpose is. My understanding is that the permit basically vets the owner so that, so that we qualify him for a permit. And yet we're making an exception for a house that is essentially given to somebody else and turned over to a new owner, but that new owner hasn't been vetted yet. So I'm just, I'm waiting for the rationale to hit me of why we're making an exception in this particular case.
Yeah, there's a two thoughts there. This does not control the transfer of the property. That's not limited. What this controls is you can buy the property or acquire it any way you want, but if you acquired it for financial considerations, you have to wait three years before you can do short-term rentals. That's the difference. Okay? Right, others? Okay, then we'll leave that that way and I'll make that change. This is another one similar to that short language of page or two ago. It was discussed in the meeting about grounds for enforcement actions and then to add and penalties up to and including. Because you'll see at the end of the document, Blake had the point about easing into permit revocations. So this language comports with what we had agreed to do based on Blake's suggestion from a month ago. Okay, let's scroll up. Parking.
Rick, before you get there, could we go back to number 10?
Okay.
There is the one permit per owner, and I think we haven't defined owner, really.
I believe we did. Owner is defined on page three.
Okay.
That is a good it is defined, but when we get to the spot in the document, I have more to say on that because I think you may be reading my mind since we haven't talked about it. How we deal with that. The definition is there, but the a management approach may not be satisfactory to you. So I'll bring that to your attention once we get to it. Are you satisfied with the definition, though?
Not as it relates to that one permit per owner, but otherwise, yeah.
Rick, I think you're number seven on page three, though, not.
Say that again, Blake.
You're referring to, we talk about owner in two places on that page, but number three and number seven, number seven, I think.
Okay, right.
Oh, I was looking at number three, yeah.
It's owner, the definition owner is in seven. Owner-operator, that's simply the people offering the
Okay, okay, I was in the wrong place. Let's see. Yeah, I think it's circular, but we can go, go on and we can come back to it.
All right, let's go back up to where we were then about number 17 approximately, right about there, 18, parking. Okay, parking. As I recall how I did this, B1 is, actually B was the original language, and then I put in three ways of addressing it because our conversation really did kind of go in different directions. So you really need to be, read B1, B2, B3, and which one, see which one you prefer or suggest another one. Larry?
All right, let me, let me throw in my two cents here. I think option B3, the question in my mind was clarity of the definition. So option B3, but I would add in front of parking spaces, short-term rental parking spaces are in addition to the spaces required for the owners for clarity. Simplicity and clarity.
In the first line, if I had short-term rental parking spaces. Okay.
Okay, I'm going back to just thinking of this totally freshly. I think there will be confusion when you say the number of bedrooms that may be occupied. There's, if you have more bedrooms than that, I mean, you cannot enforce how many are going to be occupied.
Well, we can't maybe enforce it, but we can define what it is. That's a very weak enforceable argument, but other than that, we, we've talked for months about, you know, at first it was four bedrooms only and two people per bedroom, so the maximum rental party was eight. That's been kind of the boilerplate of the issue for a while. The reason these three options are there is because the parking space issue got injected into it and it became, it could be one or the other, and it's three ways of dealing with that. Now, having said that, option B1 and B2, both in my view have the same flaw that I capitalized in number two. Because I don't know how we use parking states, spaces to define the number of people in a rental party because you can have a big car or a small car.
Exactly.
So that leans towards B3, which is what Larry had suggested with some wording. So you're saying in the last line, number of bedrooms that may be occupied. If we say the number of bedrooms in the house, then a 10-bedroom house, you're gonna have a very large rental party. Do you want to have that? And if not, how do we fix this? Yep.
Nip Tanner. One solution, a bit draconian, but would be unless there are enough parking spaces to accommodate all the bedrooms, they don't get a permit.
If there's not enough parking spaces, again, how many people do we assign for a parking space? If four SUVs come to four parking spots, that could be 32 people. To, to be ridiculous in the extreme.
Well, I assume we're I assume that B1, 2, and 3 were going to be in addition to the original B.
Yeah. That's
The original B says one space per bedroom for the first two and one space for every two bedrooms after that. So if there's four bedrooms, you need three parking spaces. If you have four bedrooms, you have two parking spaces. As I said, the draconian solution would be, you don't get a permit. Because what I'm concerned about is how you would possibly control the occupancy if you allowed people to rent a house with more bedrooms than the parking spaces for.
Yeah, I see your point. B plus B3 addresses my concern. And so that last line sentence would be if the property cannot accommodate all the parking spaces required by this ordinance, meaning the spaces per bedroom, then you really want to say you can't rent at all, or do you want to say you're limited by some number?
Well, the, the, the problem, Nip Tanner, my concern is how are you practically going to control the number of bedrooms that get rented in excess of what can be supported by the number of available parking places?
I'm pondering that, Larry.
All right, I think a lot of these things, and Nip is correct, is it gets down to how do you enforce it? So if, this is an assumption, if we wind up using one of these online services, one can measure, you have in there, this is their permit, they get six parking spots, we know what the amount of bedrooms that they can advertise. If they advertise more than that, then the remedy is they lose their, like, they lose their permit. So it's, the information is there, it's just putting a logic in the system to track it. So I think in that case, one could determine the amount of rooms rented versus the amount of parking spaces that the permit allows. So that, that's more of a input. If we didn't have that, then it would be correct, because I don't know how the hell you'd met, you know, you'd be able to measure or monitor it.
Somebody remind me, I don't recall that we have in, in here any word that or do we have in here any word that the advertisement on the internet says anything about how many parking spaces are? Thought we said it's gonna be parking spaces could be limited.
Larry Dunn again. Yeah, that, that might be one to strengthen.
Well, do we really want to do that? I mean, how much do we want to make somebody put in their internet ad for parking spaces? I thought it was a concession to add in, you know, parking may be limited and have the permit application and the permit say, yeah, you get four spots there, no more. I don't know how far deeply into what shows up on a person's internet ad we really want to go.
But we see this, but you, I've seen that. You know, Lynn Marshall, sorry, but I've seen that and in rentals where it says only two parking spaces on site. I mean, it tells the renter. And so you could also say, you know, when you say it sleeps so many, that could be, you know, those, that number of bedrooms. You advertise the number of bedrooms and say it sleeps so many based on those number of bedrooms. People get there and they find out, oh, there's more than this. But you know, that's not gonna work either because then in their comments, they're going to say, oh, there are really six bedrooms. So I, I think the draconian is probably the only way to keep it under control.
So if there are not a sufficient number of parking spaces for the number of bedrooms authorized in the dwelling. Permit is not authorized or permit is authorized with some minimal number. Nip, it was your idea, so I'm trying to just capture it to be sure we have it because somebody's gonna need to offer this as a motion.
As I said, I think the only way you can really exercise that limitation is if they don't have enough parking spaces to support all the bedrooms they have, they don't get a permit. As Lynn points out, once you allow them to rent the property, if there are more bedrooms than they have parking to support, it's, I think Larry makes a good point. You can, you can monitor what they advertise. But I think Lynn also makes a good point that if people show up and discover there's one or two or more bedrooms beyond what they thought when they rented it, that's gonna show up in the comments.
So a a four-bedroom house, looking at B, a four-bedroom house is a lot, has to have three parking spots.
Correct.
And if it does not have three parking spots, the permit cannot be issued. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
The property owner does have the option of creating additional parking spaces, if that's a big deal for them.
Okay, then, so if you don't have a number of parking spaces for the number of bedrooms authorized for the dwelling permit denied. Okay, is there a motion in that regard?
So moved.
Okay, the motion would read if there are not sufficient numbers of parking spaces for the number of bedrooms authorized in the dwelling, the permit would be, will be denied. They're second to that. I see no second. Motion dies for lack of a second. So
I'd just like to make a comment here. This is really bad process. If nobody is willing to make a second so that we can at least have a discussion. I think that's really bad process.
Well, I would disagree with the, in this regard. I like debate too, as you can tell. But the parliamentary procedure is if no one is willing to support it even for discussion, you got your answer.
I understand.
Lack of a second.
But people avoided having any discussion.
No, we had some discussion in here before the motion was offered. Okay.
Can I, can I just, can I say something?
Dana?
I agree with Nip. I understand exactly what his point is. And I would like to go back and second that, if that's possible. If not, that's fine.
Okay, so Nip has offered the motion that says if there are not sufficient number of parking spaces for the number of bedrooms authorized in the dwelling, the permit is denied. Motion made by Nip Tanner, seconded by Dana Ovia. Discussion on the motion. Yep.
I'd like to make the point that we the other options that we're looking at are very loose and very difficult to both monitor and enforce. And if people don't like this one because it's too tough, I certainly, and they, they don't vote for it, I certainly would like to see something offered up that deals with the problems that have been pointed out if we don't go down this path. And maybe there's no good option in front of us today, and maybe we need to do some research because we cannot be the only community in the entire world that has had to deal with this issue. And maybe somebody's already come up with a solution better than ours. That's my discussion.
Lynn Marshall, I would just like to see something that's enforceable. Main thing.
Do you feel this is?
I feel that, I feel that requiring that they have the, the number of parking spots for bedrooms is enforceable in the permitting process. These others, I I don't
Okay, I'm gonna speak.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, 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 it's chuff, yeah.
I've read this over a couple of times and thought about it in the 30 seconds that everybody else has had. I don't find this to be terribly contentious now that I've read it a few times. Because we've talked about congestion, we've talked about the undesirability of people parking on lawns and so forth. And if they don't have enough parking spots for the number of bedrooms, without voting for this, we're almost guaranteed to have either fire trucks that can't go by because people will go to the street. Or it'll be just congested or people parking on grass and making lawns look nasty and all the things we've talked about over the last few months. all the things we've talked about over the last few months. I guess I'm going to support the motion because it probably gets at the kinds of things we were talking about, which was congestion and parking on the street, which we would particularly individual, in the village like to discourage. But I'm open to more debate too.
Can I ask her?
Blake?
Perhaps it's directed.
Blake Powell?
Follow the logic completely. If there are two houses next to each other, one of them has four bedrooms and the other's two, but they have a driveway that's exact same size. You're suggesting that the house with four bedrooms is not allowed to get a permit, but the house with two is. Is that what we're saying?
We're hoping Nip will answer that.
Blake, if you look at our regulations concerning parking, driveway doesn't count. They have to be designated parking places of a certain dimension.
Right.
And, and what we're saying is the plan that's presented with the permit has to show that those separate parking places, not driveway, is available for the cars, for the renters. So, I mean, if, if they're two houses side by side, yeah. They, they need to have, the one with two bedrooms need to have a parking space. I'm sorry, two bedrooms need to have two parking spaces.
Right.
The one with four bedrooms needs to have three. Parking spaces that meet our specifications.
Okay. Who spoke? Wave your hand.
Sorry, Lynn Marshall.
Lynn Marshall.
Yeah, where in the regulations does it say that a driveway that has a, you know, like if it has the right dimensions, cannot be considered as parking space?
In our basic, Nip Tanner, in our basic regulations, if you look at the section on parking, you'll find it too much says what I just paraphrased.
Is that for residences, Nip, or is that for home-based businesses?
No, that's for all parking.
All parking, okay.
That's.
Including home-based businesses and retail businesses.
Yep. Lynn, that would be section nine, I believe, if you want to look it up. Okay, okay, others? Okay, now, Larry?
I, I was just gonna say, I was thinking about what Blake said, and I think he's got a point is that regard that they don't need to be next door to each other, but if I have a similar lot size, but I've got a four-bedroom house versus a two-bedroom house and have identified the spots, it does seem to be, is it equitable that one person can't have any short-term rental and the other person can, even though, but I'm only going to rent two bedrooms, same as that other guy. Why can't I get a permit? I mean, it seems to me that that's going to raise legal issues, which I, I guess my suggestion would be that have that pass the sniff past the Rick with the, with the attorney that says, you know, is that even, would that even be equitable or allowable?
Well, this could be like apartments where we would put it in there and see what we get from council. I'm sure we're going to have two or three of them, if not more, that we'll wait to see what the advice is. That's why we're going to do that legal review.
This Lynn Marshall, in section 9.1.1 for the required off-street parking for dwelling units, there are two spaces required for each family unit. Driveways may be included as required space for single-family dwellings. For rooming houses, one space for each bedroom to be rented in addition to the spaces required for the dwelling. But we're not really talking about rooming houses here. We have.
We're also really not talking about private residences, talking about short-term rental businesses. So if anything in that language, I would suggest that the business criteria apply more than the private residence.
Oh, it, well, the business one says one space for each 250 square feet.
When I said business, I meant the boarding house one that you read.
Okay.
There was a space per room, I thought.
One space for each room to be rented.
Yeah.
But rooming houses are generally would have one, one, each room might be rented to a different person.
Well, what would happen if we, if this became an approved part of this regulation and people with a yard but insufficient parking spaces had a choice to make? They either had to forego having a short-term rental business or they had to get a bulldozer in and some gravel and make a couple of parking spaces. Wouldn't that be a reasonable solution that gets at what Nip is trying to do, which is make sure people don't park all over the lawn and, and make a mess out of knowing because people want to pack people into their property? They would have to create a parking spot, lot sufficient for what they wanted to do. Is, is that a reasonable thing for us to do? Possibly. And then the two properties that Blake talked about are functionally have become fairly similar. Others on the motion? Seeing none. Call a roll, Nip.
Hi.
Blake? Dana? Dana?
Sorry, Dana, I?
Yes, Beth?
No.
Me, yes. Okay, motion carries three to two. Now, let's get back to where we were before we went off on a new measure. Larry's preference, which got some support, was B3. The motion we just passed theoretically would be an add-on to that, assuming B3 is what the group wants. Is there a motion for B3?
So moved.
Okay, Nip Tanner, is there a second? Dana Oviat? Use B3 in parking. Okay, discussion on that motion? Seeing none? No discussion on that motion. Okay, all those in favor, I'll call a roll, Nip Tanner.
Hi.
Yeah, that's a yes. Blake Powell? Dana Oviat?
Hi.
Beth Steele?
Hi.
And I'm a yay, and that's unanimous five to nothing. Okay, this add-on language here in D, that is simply added in there because once we put in things like the operator must show parking locations and the votes that we just took, the CEO is going to have to review these things. So I think we need a provision that basically says, you know, he's the last word on this. They can always go to court if they disagree, but administratively, he's the last word. So read that for a second, see if you agree. Okay, I see no one who wants to speak, so we'll leave that and I'll make the change to white pay. Okay, here on corporate ownership, this is where I flagged in the conversation earlier when, when Lynn asked about the, this is Rick Smith, I just realized I'm not obeying my own rules, sorry. Corporate ownership, we don't actually have that I could see, a measure that says what you can or cannot do with corporate ownership. And this is a minefield, we've already, the necessary is because we know we need counsel's advice on this one. The genesis is that originally, we did not want to see now, knowing private residences converted into effective hotels by people who didn't, you know, that were distant, were not on-site, and it would become kind of a hotel district, and that is the trend in many communities, and it was troubling. So if you recall, we, over months, we've always held on to the notion that the kind of corporate ownership where it's just not flagged as a Marriott, but in every other way, it's a hotel without a hotelier on staff or on-site. So we put in this corporate ownership provision saying they have to disclose this because this is in the application materials. I'm sorry, this is, let's go up, Larry? Down, I'm sorry, yeah, permit application requirements. Okay, so this is, we would require them to divulge this, and then if you remember back to the definitions, we talked about the owner being this kind of a the owner defined as many of these same terms. But nowhere in here do we say what we want to do with this thing. So what do you want to do with this thing? The simplest thing to say is corporate ownership is prohibited, and that's a minefield that I would not want to walk through for the reasons we've heard from the public in the past, that there are corporations and then there are corporations. There's Marriott. And then there's sometimes family trusts and things like that that are just legal vehicles that families decide to use for legitimate purposes. Don't necessarily want to, you know, discourage that, but as I said a moment ago, the the corporate ownership from afar to run a hotel is kind of a troubling thing for us. So what would you like to do? Beth? Beth Steele?
I, I, Beth Steele, I vote to keep the language, or I move to keep the language in paragraph two, corporate ownership as is. I feel it's necessary.
Okay. The larger question is, how do we deal with? This is just that they have to divulge this.
Right. But we've already indicated in another section that, you know, you can give your property to your LLC, your trust, whatever. So I mean, if the question is, do corporate owners get a permit? I would say yes, they do.
Okay, that's back to the, for transfer for no financial consideration.
Correct.
Yeah, all right, all right, good, okay. Lynn?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that they do not for, for the reason administratively. I mean, that means if we're, well, again, that was why I was like, what isn't, what are we calling, and when we say only one owner? To me, that meant like one family living here, having a house here, one property owner. One property owner in knowing in the knowing fire district was what an owner was. They could only have one. Now, when we extend it to, you know, corporations and you're not, and you don't know, I mean, if I want to have 10 of these things, all I have to do is, is name it a different LLC. Or are we going to be looking inside the, that corporation? And if so, then you've got to specify what percent interest makes you then, you know, an owner of consideration. You've got to look at it every year and that, because those, because the ownership can change of any of those. So, I mean, the family trust is one thing, but but when you get into partnerships, LLCs, or, or any other corporate entity, I think that is a can of worms that administratively would, would eat up a lot of time in order to stay on top of it.
Okay, let's, let's organize this for a minute because we just got a little bit crazy for a moment. Beth's motion, which does not yet have a second, was to keep the language in D2 for some further, further use ostensibly. Is there a second to that motion? Blake Powell, seconds of motion. Okay, now we're discussing keeping that language. Is there any discussion on keeping the language before we go to the door that Lynn opened? Seeing none, all those in favor, Nip Tanner?
Hi.
Okay, Blake Powell?
Hi.
Dana Oviat?
Hi.
Beth Steele?
Hi.
And I'm a yes, so that's five to nothing. Okay, so the language stays. Again, we'll get counsel's view on all of it. Now, the question that Lynn said, and I, I, that's where I bogged down. I had said what my sense of what we wanted to do was, this was in here because Lynn advocated for it several months ago. Now, I thought I heard you saying it's so complicated that it's a minefield and we, can we take it out?
No, I have not advocated for this, ever.
I believe came from your plan.
But, but it came from saying that you do not allow, what I intended to say, but was that, was that some of these you do not allow.
Pardon my frustration, but for all the times.
No, no, I could, I could, I could have made a mistake with that, Rick. I could have, when I was putting that together in a hurry, but, but what I had intended to do, because I probably lifted this from somebody else's, you know, quickly, but the, the intent was, was that, that, it was just some language about that you have to name all the, you know, name all the people who are in this, and I, and I don't think that it's a, it's a good idea to allow those. Again, it's, it's just a lot of monitoring that has to be done. And then you've got to say, you know, it gets back to what is it, one permit per owner? What is an owner? Is every LLC an owner? And what is, what does that practically mean? Just set up another LLC and I'm another owner and now I can have an, it essentially means no limit to how many you can own.
Okay, could someone else, Nip, get us out of this?
I don't know about that, Nip Tanner. Lynn, I think as I read this paragraph as written, it says once you know who the people are in an LLC or a trust or whatever, that is the, you know, the one that they show up and say, this is our organization, our legal entity, and here's who we are. Nobody who's in that can then be part of another one. I understand what you're saying about the extra work involved in trying to monitor, that they aren't in another one. But I think, and that's, you know, that's a valid question, deserves some discussion. But I think as written, it prevents me from being part in half a dozen different LLCs, each of which has a separate property in knowing. Which is, from my point of view, the goal. The one thing it doesn't ensure is that any of these LLCs actually have a connection to Noank. I mean, all the residents could live in Chicago and they'd still be entitled to an LLC under these rules. I mean, to own a short-term rental. But they can only have one. But it does open the door to their next-door neighbors in Chicago, they form another one and enable the house in Noank.
Well, or the other thing that happens, and this is a boulder, Colorado had a lot of experience with this, with, with people, you know, within the same household. Mother owns one, dad owns one, child owns one, child owns one. So within that same household, for that same address, they are owning four. It's another way to get more.
Nip Tanner, again, I'm, you know, we, we got into this recognizing. Nip Tanner, again, I'm, you know, we, we got into this recognizing that some of the properties, I believe, that are currently being rented are in some kind of a corporate ownership. But it's a, a family, a couple of members of a family, whatever. And I think we were sympathetic with, about allowing that aspect to continue. The fact that people have chosen the corporate entity to own the property rather than personal ownership. We felt in, in the context of continuity of people with history in Noank, we were, I think, generally okay with that. But it, it, as you well point out, this does open the door to ownership by people who have absolutely no connection to Noank, other than that they bought a, bought something here. Now, then the question becomes whether the restrictions we've placed on the amount of renting they can do makes it attractive to somebody who isn't planning on occupying the property during the weeks of the year when it's not rented. I think that's a protection against abuse.
Larry?
Yeah, Larry Dunn, I, I think we're kind of saying the same thing in terms of the intent. I think we're getting tied up in the lea- legal language because, you know, Supreme Court says corporations are people. I, you know, the whole thing is screwy. So the thing between item 10, one permit per owner, the definition of owner, this one on D2 is nothing more than visibility or transparency on who the hell is applying for the permit. So I don't think that's an issue per se. It's then what do we do with that information, which gets back to the one permit per owner and what the definition of owner is. And that's going to require some legal advice to, to meet our intent, which is not to have corporate multiple, you know, dwelling units over here. In addition to the, you know, when Nip just said, there's other restrictions that, that kind of limit the economics. So I think this is when we got to defer to legal advice on the definition of owner and how that relate, you know, how that can relate to the, the input we're getting from these. And can we limit it to a certain type of owner or can't we? And I don't know the answer to that. That's a legal question.
Lynn Marshall, so the thing maybe to, you know, ask him to address would be to say that, you know, you didn't want people, one person, you know, being in many corporate, corporations and, you know, making sure that that could be restricted. And also then addressing the question of a family living in a household of, of them, each member serving as a, as an owner. And, you know, in essence, having a, a pretty big family business there.
Rick? Who, who is that Dana?
Yeah, Dana.
Yep.
From the very start of this whole discussion, a year ago or more than a year ago, we've always agreed that corporate ownership shouldn't be allowed. And it was for several reasons. Number one, we didn't want one person owning several houses in Noank for short-term rental. And I thought it was also because we didn't want an outsider who owned short-term rentals, say in Hartford or New York or Chicago, also owning a short-term rental property in, in Noank. And I don't ever recall agreeing implicitly that it was okay necessarily, that one or two people have an LLC business structure, ship, structure with their house and that that was okay. So I don't know where that leaves us, except that I think this language should definitely be used to, to enforce those, those points, that, that we don't have outside influences for outside of the community. And, and people aren't allowed to have more than two and, or more than one in Noank.
Please do me a favor and we should all be very cautious with our words. Saying an outside owner isn't, we prohibit an outside owner. Anything else you put in that sentence, you've created an enormous equal protection constitutional issue. We've got to stop doing that. Well, I know we do it in casual conversation. The way Nip described it, I think it is in bounds. You want to have an owner and a property, that's your ideal. A different owner with a different property. Doesn't matter where they live. It just, we, we will just shoot ourselves in the foot if we keep doing that. So please, let's not. Is, is the way Nip described that though, is that the kind of goal? Because I heard Larry saying there's an interrelationship between page six, number 10, section A7 and D2, those three deal with ownership and then that corporate language that we're looking at right here, that's D2. This one, we may need to, to send to counsel a paragraph that says, this is what we're trying to accomplish, but it's such a snake pit that we need your advice on, what's the best way to do it? As long as we agree that the goal, the way Nip described it, is only one property per owner. And let our attorney tell us the best way to do that. Is there any disagreement with that? Lynn?
Not a disagreement, but again, I would like it explored that if I've, you know, if I have a, a couple with four children, can they have, does each of them, can each of them be an owner of a property? It gets into kind of the same machinations that you get with hiding under business entities. You're using different, different names as owners.
So Nip's goal and also prevent family members. I don't even know if you can do this, but
Living at the same address.
Get the advice, prevent family members from each individually owning an STR. Is that what you want to accomplish? Prevent family members from each owning an STR?
Nip, I have a comment on that.
Okay, Nip?
I think the situation that Lynn described that's problematic is when there are multiple members in a household.
Exactly.
Whereas the fact that we may have this in Noank, where, you know, the grandparents have a house and they want to operate a short-term rental. And the kids, their kids, who also live in Noank, want to operate a, a short-term rental. So they're still members of the same family, but they're not in the same household. So I don't think we would object to that.
No.
Okay. I sense a, a legal problem there, but let's let the legal people tell us that. I don't know how you make a distinction between family members in a household and family members who aren't in a household. The whole rational basis for that escapes me, but maybe counsel has a good answer and No, no, I know how you, you define it. I don't know how you legally justify it.
Yeah, see if you can.
But yeah, I mean, I, I'm not an attorney. I'm just, I'm trained. The two things he has told me over and over, equal protection, rational basis. So I just keep regurgitating every time something comes up that it sounds like that's going to be a problem. So we don't create a problem for ourselves. I think it's a good question to ask. So household, prevent family members in the same household from each owning an STR. Okay.
I mean, often it's because it's Lynn Marshall, because it's, it's one person doing it, but they're just putting it in different names. It's a kind of a shell game.
I understand the strategy of the people doing it to get around a rule. I don't yet understand the legal implications, so we'll ask.
Right, right.
Okay, auditing the records, that simply is, you agreed to that. And I put the language in and now you need to say the language captures what you wanted it to do, which was getting the third-party records. Larry?
Minor addition, I would recommend after the word to obtain and add the word and use any SCR information held by.
To obtain and use. Okay. Any disagreement with that? Any other suggestions on that language? Okay, we'll leave that the way it is. I simply added, we had talked about this in parking and this is the language that includes it in the property plan that they submit for review. I'm sorry, these are the measures that have to be provided in the unit for renters to know where the trash cans are and what days recycling and the required parking areas for the short-term rental use. That's kind of consistent with that whole long debate we had earlier. Disagreement? Seeing none. Permit renewal. We had changed this to be consistent with five. I'm reading number six now. Basically to say short-term permit, rental permits shall be renewable for the calendar year for which issued. And what that means is if you get it renewed in November, you're renewing it for the following year. So it's renewable for the next year. Okay?
Maybe it should say that.
It does. For the calendar year for which issued is, means if you get it in November, you're getting it for, if you want to get it for November of the year you're in, because you want to do short-term rentals in December, more power to you. That's the year you're applying for, but you have to get another one come January 1st. So if you want to renew in November for the next year, that's what that language says. For the calendar year for which issued.
Yeah, Larry Dunn, that's not what I thought I heard you say the first time.
Well, no, I put both examples in there. The first one was in November, you get a permit, so you can do a rental in November, December. The original concept was if you get it in November for the following year, what this says is you get it for the following year, but it really means either one. Because it's renewable for the calendar year for which issued. Okay, I see a couple of, so let's clarify it.
Larry Dunn, could you put it in the English first and then we could, because I, I know what you're after. It makes sense, but I don't read that here. So I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know. I think it's English, so I'm open to the suggestion. Obviously, if there's discomfort, we need different words and I'm all ears. Short-term rental permits shall be renewable for the calendar year for which issued. I don't know how you can be more clear than that. Obviously, I'm missing something, so give me a suggestion. English, I'm writing that one down, Larry, you're in trouble. Nip?
Yeah, I, I think what's implied, Rick, is the calendar year which was requested in the application.
Yeah, yeah, that's a different way of saying what I'm trying to say here. The calendar year for which the permit, well, that's the same thing, for which the permit is issued, for which the permit is requested.
And issued.
For which the permit is requested and issued. Is that better? Any disagreement with that?
It, it's renewable for a 12-month period.
Yeah.
It's always going to be January to December unless you're making an application in the middle of a year.
Well, that's true. You're right. For renewable, it's always going to be for calendar year. Well, not necessarily. If you apply in April, because you don't do short-term rentals till the end of May, you could be applying for eight months, but it's still a calendar year. That's the debate we had two months ago. But I, you know, there's an example which I hadn't thought about, which it's less than a calendar year. But it is within the calendar year. Remember, we talked about should it be 365 days or it should be a calendar year? We settled on calendar year. So the language would be, short-term rental permits shall be renewable for the calendar year for which the permit is requested and issued. Everybody okay with that? Seeing no disagreement, we'll do that.
Should there be one more sentence just for clarification, so that people understands? You know, like, for example, if you apply in April, it could be for no longer than?
Well, let, let's let the CEO answer those questions if they come up. We could make this into a 50-page regulation and I already know it's too long for normal zoning regs. So let's not do that. A little bit of language there, must reapply. Nip, you had suggested we say at least 30 days prior, just in case they wanted to apply earlier.
Yeah, and I'm worried that 30 isn't enough. Given our, you know, they've got to meet with Bill, he's got to screen it. Says, you know, you're missing some information, come back next week, you're out of town. I mean, it's
Well, this doesn't say they won't get the permit if, if he hasn't done it within 30 days. This is just for when they have to reapply. So by, by November 30th, if they want to do short-term rentals on January 1st. Does that clear it up?
I, I, I understand that, but if, let's say they show up, reapply for 30 days. Okay, I guess it's because it's, it's a reapplication.
Yes.
Going to be any significant hurdles to jump over.
Well, it could be if that corporate thing takes as much time as people think.
Most, most cases, it's going to be pretty clean. Okay, so 30 days is enough. That's what I was worried about, whether 30 days was enough for build or process it.
Okay. All right, go up there, top of page 10, please, Larry. This is another one where enforcement actions and penalties up to and including. And the reason for that is the big yellow language there in the middle of that page. Tea up this issue. The revocation rule originally was number one in the white page. It just simply said, if the zoning commission finds that somebody's violating the rules, we can go to a revocation hearing. Blake's point was maybe we want to use some measures that lead up to that. So we don't go right to a revocation hearing. So this language was my approach to try and capture that sentiment. So it's a mouthful, so you ought to read it and then we'll talk about it. Larry? Uh, you're muted somehow.
I'm mute. All right. I think action 1A is, is, is the one that's clearer. I would only suggest adding at the very end, that says the penalty is authorized under the Connecticut general statutes and this ordinance. Because we have penalties that are way above the Connecticut general statutes.
Isn't that there and right in the middle of the paragraph?
Is it in there? Did I miss?
Those are penalties authorized on the Connecticut general statutes and this ordinance.
Okay, so it's a, it's a, it's a repeat. Then do we need the last sentence? But, all right.
The last sentence.
Well, I, it looked like it was repeating.
If the, the hearing is based on the rules and the general statutes, the thing up in the
Ah, okay, not the versus the penalties.
Yeah.
Higher, okay.
Right, now, I prefer 1A language to one based on the way Blake was talking. But I did notice something that I think is kind of a defect. This gives a lot of latitude to people who are going to be cranky and maybe want to try and find a way around the rules. And this gives an awful lot of latitude for them to, you know, escape past the rules and have us you know, skate past the rules and have us chase them down before we ever get to the, the real brass tacks of enforcement, which is, we're going to take your permit. If, I don't know if other people, Blake, and then Lynn.
Yeah, Blake Powell. My, my point, and when I brought this up, wasn't so much that it goes in the, in the rule itself, but was more that this needs to be communicated to people, because as we've already seen from some of the comments, people are going to look at what was written here before and say, I gotta have one offense, if there's one parking offense, and I immediately lose my permit. That, that's the way it was coming across before. So I, I think this whole concept of how things would get resolved needs to be communicated pretty well, and otherwise you're going to get an awful lot of pushback on just one offense and I'm out.
Okay, Beth, and then Lynn.
Yeah, I mean, I have to be honest, I do not like 1A. I don't think it's necessary. I think that, I mean, paragraph one says that if there's a violation, the zoning commissioner may take action. Doesn't say he has to. I think 1A gives way too much latitude. I mean, it, it's like the Connecticut general statutes for crimes. You violate a crime, a prosecutor has a lot of discretion what they do with you with respect to that crime. But here we're saying, well, you know, anytime there's a violation, okay, then talk it out first. There may be violations that don't, you know, that talking it out is not the answer, that the zoning enforcement officer needs to take action. We're, we're taking his authority away, and I'm not in favor of option 1A.
Others? I'm wondering if we couldn't cut some out of the language of 1A to satisfy your concern, because the first sentence is really what Blake was looking for, whether it needs to be here or not. It's the intent that we resolve these short of revocation. It doesn't, as Beth.
But, but, but that's his discretion. I mean, I, I, I am just very much concerned that you leave this in here, you know, saying first between resident discussions, then he's not going to have any teeth to really do anything until we get through the discussions, and then the discussion with the CEO, and then, you know, it, it, there may be situations where he needs to act, and quite frankly, I mean, it, the language of paragraph one says he may take these actions, he doesn't have to. It's just like anything else in our regulations. I mean, God knows there's a violations that go on all the time here, and at least in the village, he doesn't necessarily act on all of them or hardly any of them. But he may, and that's consistent with the remainder of our regulations.
Hey, do I hear a motion for the language in number one with the understanding that the CEO will try to do non-nuclear methods of solution if he can, but if not, the language of one will prevail.
That's my motion.
Beth Steele for language in one, E1. Is there a second? Tanner. Discussion on the motion. Lynn?
So I'm not sure, the motion is that, that the CEO may take non-nuclear actions without describing what the steps are, is that what it is?
No, that was my colloquial way of trying to maintain our sense of humor. The language in E1 is the motion.
In A1?
Me, E1.
E1.
Page 10.
Oh, 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 okay. All right.
Anybody else? I'm persuaded by Beth's argument myself, so.
I mean, again, it's just like any other regulation we have. We don't say in there, well, the first step is going to be that the CEO, you know, tells the neighbors to talk it out, or he just talks to them. Nowhere in our regulations do we say that. Why would we do that now?
Agreed. I think you're standing on your victory. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree too. It's really important, and particularly, you talk about, oh, they have to talk to each other. Well, sometimes the complaints will have been made in confidence, and the people may not be comfortable doing it. Plus, you've got people that may be, you know, I mean, they can live anywhere in the world. They can be away, you know, and you can't, I guess, I guess you're dealing with the owner's agent at that point. I don't know, but just having to track down people, make, go through all these steps, and, and the CEO has to try to work it out with them. Some things are so, are going to be, you know, for some things that make sense, again, CEO's discretion, and some things, it's just like, no, you take action now. There's a big problem. You've got a house that's turned into a drug house. No, you take action. You should be able to stop that thing in a couple months. You know, and not.
I sense that people are ready to vote.
Yep.
All those in favor, I'll call the roll. Nip Tanner.
Hi.
Blake Powell. Janovia.
Hi.
Beth Steele.
Hi.
I'm an I. Five to one. Five to zero. Okay, the language agreements we had talked about and concluded that the reapplication, I'm sorry, revocation for a second offense, person as a person will revoke twice, shall be ineligible to reply for a new permit for a period of three years from the date of the second revocation. That was one, and then in the penalties, we talked a lot about that, and we decided it would be a penalty for violation operating a short-term rental business without a permit, shall be five times the advertised nightly rental rate for the property. Are those two language choices satisfactory to you? Okay, see?
Just, just a question, is the penalty just five times or five times every time you see it? I mean, is that clear?
No. I think what was intended in the discussion was if a person operates without a permit, when we get to levying a penalty, if we can even do that under zoning rules, it'll be five times the advertised rate. If a person does it again, then he would get the penalty levied again. I don't think it means every night that the ad is on the internet is a separate offense. I mean, that.
Okay.
All right. That's the end of the document, but not the end of the issues.
Hey, Rick?
Yeah, yep.
Look, Tanner. I've got a suggestion that, maybe we can talk a little bit about. I think we've put in a lot of work, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth to come up with a very comprehensive draft here. As I understand it, once we get the advice from the Bill and John, and take it to a hearing and finalize it, we're going to hand it to Bill and ask him to implement it, to process all of the applications that he gets. And it occurs to me that that's asking a lot of him. He has listened in on some of the discussion, but certainly not all of it. And I think, as with architectural design review, it would be helpful if, for at least the first year of implementation, the commission weighed in on the applications after they were screened by Bill, so that any of the nuances, confusion, whatever, that may arise from us, we may not even have a uniform understanding of what we've agreed to. And I think it would be a good exercise for us to do that. And coming out of that, if we saw a need to revise, modify, update the regulations, we'd have a better basis to do that. So just a suggestion.
Yeah. I'm suspecting, I'm going to ask, can we do this without regulatory authority, or or do we need it like design review? Because I agree with you, I think that would be beneficial, even if it's a consultation. I know part of what he's going to say is, that's the CEO's business. You guys are the judge. You've done your judgment, you've implemented something, now let me, you know, do the implementation. That's how he is with a lot of things, for good reason, because that's how the zoning business works, but I think in this case, it's worthwhile to do what you're suggesting, which is have these referred to us for review and discussion and guidance to him if we think it ought to be a certain way, even though the law may require him to do it the way he interprets the law. I don't know. It's worth a discussion.
Nip, in, in, Nip Tanner, in furtherance of that point, when we adopted the regulations on solar panels, we were the sole judge of those for a while. After we felt we had it nailed down, we turned it over to Bill.
Remember, we had to put it in the language, though. That was a text amendment. Yeah, so that's why I'm going to ask if, if we can do it without the regulatory authority, should we put it in, in the authority? The other thing I thought you were starting to ask, and you didn't, which I'm going to say what my intent here is, we have two big things still to talk about, so let's not lose sight of that. When we finally decide to send this to John, I propose we also send it to Bill at the same time. John to give it a legal sufficiency review, Bill to look at it from the very point that Nip talked about, the, the implementation challenges. I think we need advice from both of them, and I think we can do that concurrently. That's just my intent of how to do that. The big issues are, I do not, I've decided I do not want to let that non-hosted rental issue thing die on the vine. I'm not sure I'm going to support it at the end. It will depend on the kind of arguments we hear, but for the purposes of getting legal review, implementation review, and giving ourselves some more time to think about it, I think the concept of prohibiting non-hosted short-term rentals is a good idea. And I'm going to offer a motion, and I want to give the justification first, because after we get into the debate, I'll be waiting till last, and I want you to hear my rationale. Non-hosted rentals, in my view, are a commercialization of residential properties, and that's inconsistent with our current knowing zoning ordinances. If you read the Blue Book, one of our principal jobs that we rarely get involved in because it's settled, the zoning districts have been settled for some time. We're supposed to keep commercialization out of residential areas, and we're supposed to foster commercial businesses in the commercial zones. So non-hosted rentals, in my view, are a hotel without a hotel manager on site, and therefore it's a commercialization of rental properties in residential zones. That's point number one. I think non-hosted rentals, we risk the diminishment of neighbors' quality of life since a host is not present to control the rental party. I've felt that way on the noise and unruly behavior issue for quite some time, but I think those problems are, are more likely with non-hosted rentals, and and therefore it's part of my rationale for the motion. Third reason that likely decreases property values of surrounding properties. This is based on the press coverage that we've all read over the last couple of years of other areas of the country, the effects of the practice on the surrounding properties. It's a very good business for the owners. I don't dispute that a bit, but it's not so good for the neighbors, and since there's a couple of, or three dozen of these things in knowing, and there's 700 households, I'm leaning towards the zoning statement of purpose in the Blue Book that says, you know, essentially, to paraphrase, we're required to maintain the tranquility of the neighborhoods. So I just think the risk is too great on that count. So my motion is short and sweet, prohibit non, I move that we prohibit non-hosted rentals in knowing. Is there a second? Okay, there, oh, Nip Tanner. Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion. Dana.
Rick.
Yep, Dana.
Rick, who would be left to, to operate short-term rentals in knowing, once we have eliminated non-hosted, and we've already eliminated apartments? Do you have any idea what the number would be?
That's, that's, I said we had two problems. That's, that's the other one.
Yeah.
My preference would be for hosted rentals, including apartments, to be allowed, and non-hosted rentals to be prohibited. And I don't say that in an ironclad fashion. As I said before the motion, I, I want to listen carefully to the kind of comments we receive and legal advice we get from John, and I may change my mind. Because there is some value to society to these things, as well as to the owner of the property, and I get that. I just see more risk than I see value. But you're right, if we, if we left the apartments the way we left it a month or two ago, and we vote for this one, there are very few opportunities, and that's not my intent. So I want to get some advice. I want to get some input. I know the input we'll get on those two things together is exactly, you were diplomatic in your, your question. The commenters from the public will, will not be so diplomatic. You know, it'll be like when they commented in 2019 when we said you can't do a short-term rental for an hour or something. And after the giggles were over, they said, that's ridiculous, and we took it out, but. So yeah, that's, that's the dilemma. And I'm not sure the motion and leaving apartments the same as we voted for previously is a worthwhile thing to do, because it makes us look like we haven't thought this through carefully once we get to public comments. Lynn, and then Nip.
Well, could you not ask just for legal advice? Which in, in this, so it'd just be a question, not have it written up in the regulations, but say, could we, could we have, have the requirement that they, that they only be hosted rentals, and in that case would be taking out the apartments? So you never, you don't have to put it in the document, just have as a question, then you can bring those answers back to the commission to discuss.
You mean for John?
Yes.
So you're saying, define the question again, so I make sure I have it right?
Well, so you can, so leave the document as it is, and then, because as you say, if the public sees it, it'd be very confusing if they say, oh, you, you don't allow any hosted, but then you don't allow apartments. Yeah, that doesn't make any sense. So now you're saying, say, so, so there would just be a separate question saying that we're thinking about requiring that they be hosted, short-term rentals, if, if the, if, if the commission decides that to, to do that, the apartments would be removed, that, 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 that restriction would be removed, and say, would you please say whether there would be any legal issues with doing it that way? So it's just a separate question.
So if we were thinking of doing hosted only, the apartment prohibition would be taken out?
Yeah.
Okay, and are there legal implications to either of those?
Right.
Okay, legal implications. Okay, thank you. Others? Yep?
Nip Tanner. Rick, I agree with your motion. It's obviously tough, but I like it for the reasons that you explained when you offered it. I'm not comfortable with tying it to the prohibition on apartments being used for short-term rentals. As I recall, the logic behind that prohibition was to foster the opportunities for economic diversity. Was to foster the opportunities for economic diversity. And who lives in knowing. That the apartments are a source of diversity. That we are unable to achieve through home ownership. And to give that up so that. Someone could. Take that apartment and turn it into short-term rentals. Is not appealing to me in terms of the kind of community that I'd like to live in. I'd much rather. Those apartments be occupied by people who are part of the community at least 12 months a year and. Now, in the case of several of my neighbors, they've been here in their apartments almost as long as I have, in some cases longer. And I think that's a plus for the. Overall. Community, and I'd hate to see that lost.
But do you see the dilemma Dana pointed out? If you do both. Wait a minute, Lynn.
I, I don't have a problem explaining either one. I wouldn't. My explanation would not tie them together. The one in terms of prohibiting non-hosted rentals is to protect the. Neighbors from activities that can't be monitored effectively from afar, certainly not as well. As if the owner is on site when the rental is occurring. The desire to protect the apartment rentals for long-term rentals is. Based on diversity and, you know, the kind of community that we want to live in. It's not just either short-term rentals. Or homeowners, but has another dimension to it. I don't see a problem with explaining it. I'd be happy to do it.
I, I don't see any problem with explaining them as you've explained them. I see a problem with the fact that if there's. 100% opportunity with no regulation and you prohibit non-hosted rentals and you prohibit apartments from being used as hosted rentals. Or even just as short-term rentals. You might end up with very, very few opportunities and. I'm not sure. Well, it's to each of us to decide whether we think we're comfortable with that or not. Okay, Lynn. Beth, you have that your hand, raise hand icon up. Do you want to speak again?
No, I, I think I had my hand up from the previous comments that I made, so nobody took, I didn't take my hand off.
Your hand is now lowered, but I also lost you on the screen somehow. Great. I hear you, but I don't.
I can see her.
I lost her on my screen. All right. Oh, there she is. Okay, you moved around. All right, Lynn.
If, if we don't allow, I mean, I, I agree totally with what Nip says about the apartments and the value of apartments, totally. But if, if we say that. We're not, it has to be a hosted rental. And we're not allowing apartments, then is not the only thing that's left is room rentals, which we've decided. We weren't going to cover under this ordinance. It would still be the rooming house. So it leaves you covering nothing unless you change the hosted to allow for adjacent properties.
If I could answer.
It just seems like you're wiping out everything, everything.
And I agree, and that's where I got with the answer in my mind to Dana's question, because. If you can't do non-hosted rentals and you can't do apartments. You're left with rooms in a house without a kitchen. Rooms without a kitchen in a house that's occupied by the owner. Which. Narrows those opportunities I talked about. Do we want to narrow them that far? I'm almost talking myself out of my own motion. Yep.
I don't have a lot of data on it, but I suspect that there's a whole lot more rentals, apartment rentals. In the village than they are non-hosted. Properties. So. I'm not in favor of allowing the non-hosted. But if I have to allow that in order to preserve the apartments for long-term rentals, that would be my preference, strong preference.
Probably a lot more apartment rentals in the village than non-hosted rentals. Preference, protect apartments. Blake?
I, I'm certainly in favor of getting John Casey's opinion on both sides of that, you know. But. The, the premise of, well, I, I would say that. Maybe 80% of the issues that these proposed regulations that we've been going through really address. The non-hosted rental situation. So if we were to change this to get say that. Only hosted rentals are going to be allowed. I mean, I would want to revisit just about everything in this draft document.
Others? Beth?
I agree with Blake. I. I feel like this document is really geared at the non-hosted rental. And what have we been working on for the last two plus years? I think it would be very frustrating to start. I mean, I, I know we wouldn't be starting over, but I agree with Blake that. We would have to revisit the entire document.
Well, in one sense, I know where you would have to do that, and that would be in the agents. Because if you prohibit a non-hosted rentals, you almost don't need that agent language.
There's a lot of things. Do you need the 45 days?
I agree with you. Yeah.
You know, I mean, we put 45 days on it to keep it from being a factory where people aren't there. And they're renting out their house, but if people are required to be there, then why do we even need the 45 days? I mean, we could debate every point. Not just the agents. There's a lot in there that I think would have to be revisited. From my perspective.
Okay. Other comments, Dana and then Lynn.
So. There are two solutions to this. The first solution is just to. Eliminate and prohibit short-term rentals totally knowing. And the second solution is to go back to my favorite subject was, was the limited permit proposal. That I put forth about through three months ago.
Okay, Lynn?
You know, I, I think that the, because we have. Been working under the premise for so long that we were allowing. The non-hosted rentals and that's, this whole document, really, it's Blake's right. Has been constructed around trying to put those protections in place. And if we indeed, one thing we haven't discussed is a monitoring company. If we have a good monitoring company to help with that. I think that allays, you know, some of my concerns about, about things getting out of hand. We have a good, good monitoring system and quick action enforcement action. I think that really, I think that really helps a lot. If we find out that a lot of those restrictions that we've put in. Are not allowed for some legal reasons. Then we have to go back and revisit. Do we need, how, how, how do we keep it from being just, you know, a big corporate, you know, a corporate thing and where this is no longer residential neighborhood? And then you may look at things like the principal residence. So, but we don't have to go there yet. Let's try, I think, the way that we've, we've got it. Crafted now.
Hey, I think everybody has weighed in. Does anybody want to take a second bite? Right, the motion is prohibit non-hosted rentals in knowing. I'm fond of withdrawing a motion if I've made it and I now feel differently, but I'm also told that from a parliamentary point of view. Having had a substantial debate on emotion, it's better to just pass it up or down. The, the question in my mind is if we pass it and put it in there and ask for legal review of the. The interaction between apartments and non-hosted rentals. Are you happier with that? Are you happy with the thought that we have enough, enough other measures built in there? To control even bad behavior and bad outcomes, even if non-hosted rentals are allowed. Before we go calling for a vote, I want to make sure everybody is appreciated. That's the two ways to go at this. I'm back right on that middle of the fence I was on a month ago. Yep.
I seconded the motion, but I am persuaded by Blake's argument.
Okay. You're withdrawing your second?
No, I'm just going to vote against it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, then let's call the question because I think I see the way it's going and I kind of agree. All those in favor, I'm going to call the roll. Let me get to the right page here.
Hey, Rick, could you, could you repeat the motion, please?
I just did. Prohibit non-hosted rentals in knowing. Okay, Nip Tanner.
No.
Blake Paul. Dana Ovia.
No.
Hey, best deal?
No.
I'm a no. So that is. Zero to five motion fails decisively. Okay. The one other issue I had on my list of things to talk to you about was. Only, it's actually very related to the discussion we just had with. The thing that died. Most hosted, but it's different. Most hosted rentals. Are likely to be apartments. And I wondered, want to be sure everybody has, I know Nip has, because I, I've heard how he discussed it tonight, and it's very consistent with what he said in the past. Want to make sure everybody else's is. Appreciates the implications that if we want to foster hosted rentals. And a lot of them, because of the way buildings are structured and people have designed their houses. A lot of those potentially hosted rentals will be in apartments. And it's the owner that we've tried to say, well, we'd like to have them have an opportunity to be able to stay in their home. Which is the whole point of the hosted rental part of the thing. Have we sufficiently considered the implications of saying, but you can't do short-term rentals there? Dana?
I, I don't think we have. I was never in favor of prohibiting short-term rental operators. Prohibiting rent apartments from operating short-term rentals. I, I think it was unfair. I don't think it will stand legal muster, and it just doesn't pass the sniff test to me.
Okay, that reminds me that what I had said at the time when I voted for that was I wanted to see what John had to say about it. Maybe I shouldn't have said anything, and we'll just get the legal input on it. Lynn?
It is not, Dana, that is absolutely not true, that it doesn't pass legal muster. So.
No, I said that, and I'm asking.
Well, I know, but in Boulder, Colorado, in Boston, let's go to Boston, Massachusetts, they have done that. And, and so what happened in both places? Was that because short-term rentals were so profitable. Apartments were being converted to short-term rentals. At an alarming rate, and there was not housing for people who were renters. And so. In Boston, they out, went back and outlawed them completely. In Boulder, they thought that legally they could not outlaw the ones that they had already given. To whom they had already given permits. So they said, no new permits. If you don't already have a, a one as an apartment. You cannot get one now for apartments because it was decimating their rental population. And the people that are renters in our, in our village. They are adding so much to the diversity, young people, children. Retirees, I mean, it's just, it's a wonderful diversity that I would, that I think we would be in danger of losing if we. Allow apartments to be short-term rentals. And if, if it's true that legally, we can. We, we, once they have been given a license, we can't change that ever, then something very valuable will have been permanently lost.
I know I asked for that, but you know, I don't want to. Redo the debate from two months ago. It was just as hot at that time, and. I just wanted to be sure everybody. Thought through the implications, and frankly, I didn't because the bottom line of that vote back then was, let's get John's advice about whether we can even do this. Nip?
Yeah, I think in terms of. The concerns that a couple of members have expressed about giving. Property owners who have something that could be an apartment, i.e. it has a separate bathroom, has a separate kitchen. Preserve that for short-term rental is. That's a new argument. 10 years ago, before Airbnb was around. People made a decision if they had that option. You know, they, they probably used it for short-term rental, or they kept it for an occasional visit for their in-laws or whatever. The creation of the short-term rental market has given them another option. But it's not like it's a God-given right that it has to be preserved. All we need, you know, and it's, if they're doing it today, it's illegal in knowing. So for us to say, we're not going to allow you to continue doing the illegal one. I don't think we're really depriving them of anything that we ought to be worried about. I think it's a perfectly legitimate argument for us to say, we want to preserve that kind of accommodation. Standalone with sleeping kitchen bathroom for long-term rentals. And it's perfectly valid, and I think it's much more desirable than running the risk of losing that to short-term rentals.
Okay, others? There's no motion, doesn't need to be one. We do need, if you're comfortable with it. My view is we've gone through this, we've sorted out everything that we can. We have some things on the list for review. It would be time for a motion to refer this to counsel and the CEO for their review. And advice coming back to us. Is there a motion to do that? Blake Paul. Motion to refer to counsel and CEO. And did I see a hand there from Beth? You want to second it?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, you seconded it. To refer to counsel and CEO. Discussion on that motion.
Can we talk about this for a few more months?
If you'd like to. Good injection of humor there. Okay, all those in favor, roll call, Nip Tanner?
Aye.
Okay, Blake Paul. Okay, Dana.
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Aye, and me, I'm an I, so the I's have it. So that'll, I'll make the changes we made tonight and get it out to them for their review. I. Don't expect to push them to try and do it instantaneously, so it could be we've just bought ourselves four to six weeks worth of breathing time. Blake and Larry?
Despite the fact that we just approved this, what exactly are you going to ask John to, to do?
Well, there are a number of things in there. The, the most. I, I don't have a list of all of them for you, but one of them is the whole nature of the corporate. Ownership, the definition, what the goal was. Remember. ownership, the definition, what the goal was. Remember, I kept reading what Nip had described as the goal.
You're asking for very specific opinions on very specific aspects of this? Or are you asking for a general overall opinion or?
When I go through the whole thing and draft an email request to him, where there is a specific need, I'll point that out and say this was the nature of the debate. And this is the, you know, what we're looking for advice on. There are three or four anyway in there like that. But then there's just 10 pages or nine really of of the document. And what we want him to do is go through the whole thing and tell us if we're creating a problem that's a legal problem. And if so, is there an alternative he can think of that gets us to accomplish what we put down on paper in a more legally defensible way? That's for him, for John. Now for Bill, I want him to read this with equal vigor and say, there's no way I can do that. You know, there's no way his owning officer can possibly do that. And if I were you, I would do it this way instead of that way. So Larry?
Yeah, suggestion. One of the things that we put off was, is all this stuff enforceable? So I have a suggestion that after John has done his review, that we do a a no obligation assessment on options for enforceability. And I further suggest that that the commission assigns Lynn and myself to go do that with no obligations to the to the commission or the the fire district.
You guys would be working as a less than caucus sized subcommittee to evaluate your view of enforceability of all of these measures?
Yes.
Any disagreement with that? I have none. Be worthwhile exercise. Okay, could do that.
Right, and again, that's after John's review. It's not worth it doing it beforehand, but.
After Casey's review.
I probably should, I'm sorry, Larry Dunning, I I probably should have asked Lynn, is that okay? Since we.
I saw Lynn going for her bottle of scotch there.
Yeah, that 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 certainly is all right. I think that's a good idea, because I think, I mean, that's just such an integral part of it. And and I think that is good. You know, and I and I tell you, I really like when Bill gives us his opinions in writing. I find him to be very clear and concise and to give really valuable input. And so and I don't know to what extent he would, you know, he would say, I mean, part of what what he would need to evaluate is, you know, if I'm going to try to do this all by myself, I mean, which is pretty obviously impossible, or what kind of support would he need? You know, with or without a monitoring company? And I'm not sure he knows enough about the monitoring companies and what they do at this point to be able to address that. Well, what do you think, Larry?
I think he wouldn't. No reason for him to know that.
Yeah.
So it it may be, again, we all expected this to be iterative, that you do this, you see if you could actually measure it, and then you come back and you make modifications. So it's it's certainly okay if he comes back and said, I got a problem enforcing this, 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 and this. That provides input for that review. Can we get it done another way? Is it affordable? Can we do it and have zero cost to the to the community, if you will, other than the permit holders?
I see this as the culmination of step one, which is probably the longest step in the process. But step one of four, just to set out so we know where we're going with this. This we ask for review. The second step is going to be after we consider what the comments are that we get back and potentially make changes. Then we go for, if we decide to do this, a public workshop and let the public tell us exactly what they think and hopefully give us suggestions for improvement. Step three, after we digest that, would be well, maybe there were only three steps in this, then the formal proposal and a pub formal public hearing. Thought there was another step in there, but maybe not. So so that's kind of the horizon for the next potentially six months, maybe a little more. And if it works out, COVID relief working out, we might be able to do the public hearing in person. And we still haven't yet decided whether the informal public workshop would be done on Zoom of some way, but we don't have to cross that bridge tonight. It's just I wanted to give you a sense of where I saw the the timeline horizon was for us. Next meeting is the 19th. That's a continuation of the hearing on Escher. I suspect we won't have any time to talk about any of this stuff and probably won't need to. I think we all need to take a breather on the last two and a half months of work. So with that, is there a motion? Does anybody have anything else on short term rentals they want to offer for consideration? Larry?
I think we should all take this opportunity to applaud ourselves, I guess. We got through this and have a document that can be submitted for legal review. I think that's a significant accomplishment. So I didn't want to let it let it go live without making that comment.
I would rather do that six or seven months from now when we have.
It's a checkpoint. Okay.
One step in a long road.
Yeah, but it's isn't quite an accomplishment. Thank you for all the hard work.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'm hoping for another unanimous motion here. Yep. Motion to adjourn second, Blake, all those in favor, say aye. Whatever you want. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your forbearance.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh huh.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we are. See ya. So Larry, you're going to talk to Sean about both of these, right? This tape.